Public service announcements, Mary Dowling.
I just have a couple. I see Lynn sitting there. I'm sure our chair is going to have the same. But to thank the town clerk's office for the great job they did with our presidential election, all our senior service, seniors that volunteered. I know you got help from the tax assessor's office that came and worked till nine at night. And I just thought it went very smoothly, so I think we should be proud of our town. Another public announcement that I have is I want to thank everybody for the Home of the Brave 5K road race that we had November 9th. We just had our special events meeting, and it's approximate, but after clearing expenses, we think we raised about $4,800. And this year, the money's going to go to the American Legion Post 109 to give for veterans in need. So, we had about 60 different towns, more than 200 participants.
Wow.
The fire department did a great job. They raised the flag, which was really touching. Our police department did an outstanding job. And I think Lieutenant Bateman and Sergeant Forty Years Police Academy from Boyleston, the academy that they belonged to back in the day, all ran, 40 of them.
Oh, wow.
And so, it was a really, it was a great event. And then I just have one more.
First stick.
A resident contacted me over the weekend. She got, this is not a positive thing, she got a spam email that alleged to be coming from the town saying that she owed property tax and to please click here to see the amount that you owe. So, she contacted me. I told Rob, and I guess you were going to put something-
It is on my Facebook and the town's Facebook.
Yeah, just in case other people got the same one. Don't touch it. It's going to come from Sturbridge. And that's it.
Great, thanks. Chase?
Yeah, I just want to echo the thoughts on the town clerk's office. Congratulations. It's a big thing to have behind you. So, thank you. And the tree lighting is the Friday after Thanksgiving?
Yes.
That's good for me.
Hey Lynn?
I just want to wish everyone in the community a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving. And for those of you that are going to be working, please stay safe out there.
Yeah, and I will join in all that, and I will reiterate that the drought conditionings, conditions are worsening, and everybody here should be taking it incredibly seriously because these brush fires can get real dangerous, and we just have to be very careful. I mean, just look at what New York did today where they issued, New York City issued a public water warning and is scaling back all usage. So, that hasn't happened in my lifetime, and it's something that we're going to have to be dealing with going forward. So, everybody, again, be careful. And again, thanks Lynn for all your hard work. All right, with that being that it is past 6:35, Mary Dowling, would you-
Okay, yes. Notification is hereby given that an application has been filed by Angelina's 538 Limited Liability Company for new on-premises liquor license restaurant, all alcoholic beverages at the premises currently located at 538 Main Street in Fistil with the Sturbridge Select Board. In accordance with Mass. General Lodge, Chapter 138, a public hearing will be held Monday, November 18th, 6:35 PM, Veterans Memorial Hall in Sturbridge, second floor.
Great, thank you. All right, come on down. Please identify yourself for the record.
My name's Kimberly Sneed.
All right, and who are you? Just explain what you-
Oh, okay. My name's Kimberly Sneed. I am looking to open up Angelina's 538 as a refined American restaurant. We have about 75 seats and hoping to open in February-ish.
Great. All right, questions for the board?
Where is 538? What kilted is that?
It's the, where Tutti Quanti is.
Oh, upstairs. Oh, upstairs. Well, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Now, I wish you luck. I was, first I was like, we have two Tucantis?
I know.
I liked upstairs too, but whatever. Thank you.
And you're, you're going to have tip-certified service?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions for the board?
Just wondering, how did you come up about with the name Angelina's?
My mom's name's Angela, so I kind of played off of that.
Just curious. Thank you.
All right, well, this is a public hearing. Does anybody in the community want to chime in? I don't think so.
I always support new food.
Yeah, there it is. Okay, so with that, if there's nothing else from you or the board, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the license, the on-premises liquor license to Angelina's 538 LLC.
I think we have to close the public hearing first. Yeah. So, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second that.
All those in favor? All right, great. And now Chase, do you have a motion?
So moved then.
Yeah, all right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Are you changing it quite a bit, or are you leaving the basics?
Um, doing a lot of-
Because I know it was a restaurant before.
Doing a lot of cleaning, painting, just kind of revamping it and making it my own.
Great. What kind of food? It sounds Italian to me.
I know it sounds Italian, but no. Gourmet burgers, wings, a lot of different appetizers.
Nice.
Kind of like a date night spot.
Great.
Good luck.
Great, well, good luck.
Thank you.
You'll probably see some of us in.
Not cook.
Yeah, we love our food.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Good luck.
Moving on to presentation by Building Engineering Resources Incorporated regarding the lighting on the town common.
So, just a little bit of an update on this. ARPA had supported up to 250,000. We contracted with Par Corporation to put our bid specs together, get some engineering quotes and whatnot. We, in one of my meetings by chance, Mr. Hershey had mentioned to me that those lights had been custom-built for us in the 70s. So, that sort of opened this whole door of do we get new ones or do we save what we have? Preliminary determination, and Samantha Downs from BER, who's working with us through Par Corporation, and the electricians, the electrical contractors group, looked into a light restoration company out of Connecticut, and he can do that restoration, we believe, within the price range of what we can afford, and not much more than what new lights would be. The library lights will be new fixtures. Those were not anything sort of historic, or Becky is confident that her board will be comfortable. She's selecting, or they're going through right now to look for something as similar as they can get that actually will be better for lighting because that walkway is very dim. We do have Tony Crane working directly on this project to ensure the safety of the trees through any trenching that we might do. We talked about adding a post at the library, but that was a little risky with one of the trees, so we're going to just work with better lighting as opposed to adding. But the big key was on the commons. So, the posts do need to be replaced, the posts themselves. Heather looked at them. We've looked at them. There were some cracks. They're old wood posts. Those will be replaced with something as similar as we can get, but the fixtures themselves, we're looking to restore. And so, Samantha's here to talk a little bit about that. I believe the gentleman from the lighting company may try to pop on info, the custom builder of these lights. We're going to work with inspections to talk about whether we can put the fixtures at the bottom or the top, or what the appropriate LED will be to get the best downlighting and all of those things, not to impact the neighborhood. But the big key here, I think, is about the lights, the fixtures themselves. So, Samantha, whatever you'd like to add or share, or answer questions, or-
So, this was supposed to be Ryan's Spotlight tonight, who is from the restoration company Grant Light, and I can't tell if he's on or not. I don't know if you have the ability.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't really, I don't have much that I can share because it's, it's, he was supposed to explain to you what-
Yeah, let me just, I'll text him again if you can. But in the meantime, if you have questions about the refurbishing, Samantha would be the person. And I know, Mary, you had mentioned some concerns.
Well, no, my questions didn't really have too much to do with that. I think you kind of answered it. In my own minds, I was kind of hoping that the lighting that led to the library since was going to match the common, because, I mean, it's all part of one kind of continuous aesthetic, and now I found that-
Oh, up at the top, the black lighting? Okay, so, I mean, that's-
So, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I guess that's up to the library trustees, but was it so much more money to have those match the common?
Samantha, do you know what the cost was on the common lights versus what the library lights will be? Uh, Ryan told me that it would be about 2,500 to 4,000, or probably 5,000 for the common fixtures. The quote that I got for library fixtures, which are a smaller scale, was more around like 1,500 to 2,000.
Well, I get that they're smaller.
But that wasn't for a fixture that looked anything like the common fixture, though.
I mean, I know that we don't want probably as big as what's on the common, but-
Something-
Can we get something that is just a little smaller, that is just like it? Is it going to have the ability to have like lights around it like the common does? Because that whole, right now, you know, we tried to put Christmas lights around those a few years ago, and they don't take-
Well, we could on the library lights, put the hangers. The posts on the commons don't actually have the hangers on them, because we were talking-
Not hangers, I'm talking about, we have lights that are going around.
Right, but we have the option of putting hooks for that on the common. We don't have those currently.
I'm not even talking about hooks. I'm talking about the library lights don't have any ability to have the lights going around the post.
I don't know why they wouldn't.
Because they said they, doesn't plug in, or-
Well, it sounds like we're replacing the library lights altogether, and what we're really, the question is, well, it sounds like any post we put in should probably have sufficient hooks to hang things from. But the broader question is whether or not there's any new fixtures that can be purchased, I guess by the library, to, that will somewhat replicate or be in line with the aesthetic on the common, or somehow consistent.
That's what I was, that's what I was hoping.
Sam, if we could look at light options that look similar. So, the restoration of the common lights, those aren't new or custom, they're restoration.
Right.
So, we're going to save what we have. We likely will not find the exact same thing, but if-
I don't want to step on the toes of the trustees either, but-
Becky had picked something, and I'll look to see and talk to Becky. And the other thing is on the posts, we could make the posts match probably, Samantha, right?
So, I was able to find a wooden post. Are we talking for the common or for the library?
For the library.
Library. We're only talking about the library right now.
To match the common.
The library has just the metal round poles right now, so you would have to, you know, remove those and replace those with a wooden pole if you want, if that's what you wanted. I've only been able to find one commercial manufacturer of a wooden pole that would be the size that-
Everything else is all residential grade. Quite there on the library conversation yet.
Okay.
So, it sounds like it's good on the common. I'm very happy if we stay consistent with what we had. I suspect the rest of the board feels similarly. And just as we develop out options around on the walkway to the common, can we just make sure that it's not, just that it's-
It's complimentary.
It's consistent or complimentary as much as reasonably possible. And if it's an issue, we'll deal with it when it's an issue, but let's just-
So, the challenge, the little bit of a challenge with that is those poles were not going to be replaced, just the fixture, the black pole.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting we should replace the poles. So, Lynn, it's up.
I just want, wait a minute, town clerk. But I know what Lynn was trying to say was the lighting, the galon that goes on the lampposts. Each of the lampposts on the common have outlets at the bottom, so you can plug in lighting. That's what you were trying to say. So, that's what you were trying to say, correct?
That's what I was trying to say, because if you look now, the library's all dark.
So, you're asking for outlets?
Yeah.
Okay, so Samantha, that clarifies. So, if we kept the same poles, can we add outlets to the common poles? I don't know that we can because-
Not the common, to the library.
To the library, excuse me. No.
Why? I don't understand.
Because of the trenching, I think.
Because you have to redig and run the line.
Yeah.
And the question is, do you want to take the chance on the trees? Tony was concerned about trenching that.
Well, let's, listen, it sounds like there's some factual chase down that must happen.
Solar?
Yeah, so, but there's, let's, let's, one thing at a time. Let's, let's say, so right now, the common is being refurbished. That's the vote, or the authority of-
Well, yeah, no, yes, but the, I have to get the bid specs out next week.
Okay.
So, we're going to have to come-
Now, Robyn, Robyn, let me back you up. We are issuing bid this Friday, so-
This week. Bid specs have to go out in order for this to be under contract in time.
So, with that, so it seems like on the common project, the, we're all comfortable, is everybody, the rest of the board comfortable with just-
I am.
The plan is laid out, okay. And then, can we define optionality on the, the library lighting to both evaluate a consistent, I don't know if sconce is the right word, but lighting-
Fixtures.
Picture, yeah. And what we can do to provide power so that we can add decorative lighting or-
Exactly. I mean-
We have to run a court of some sort. I just-
Well, I don't understand why digging a small trench, we're not talking about a mile-long trench. We're talking about, you know, 30 feet. I don't understand why we can't accomplish that.
It runs with one particular tree that Tony was concerned about.
But let's, let's not guess at it. This is, this is, these are his answers to these questions. Like, we don't have to speculate as to what the potential answers are. So, let's define those and do what we can to, within reason, expand the, you know, there's no reason we can't put decorative lighting on the posts at the library. That makes most sense. So, however that goes, we don't need to, I don't think so.
You can explore it.
Yeah. So, do you want a motion here?
Yeah, motion to support at least putting bid specs out, and as long as you all are comfortable that the library board is having some input on the fixtures there as well.
We love our trustees. We're always happy to have.
Yeah, I mean, the trustees are working with Becky on the fixtures. We'll do our best to figure out some way to get power to those poles, even if we have to do some external-
Yeah.
Something to the library.
Let's be small C conservative with it all, but make sure we get where we need to be. So, do we have a motion to support putting this out to bid this week?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thanks, Samantha.
Thanks, Samantha.
I'll give you a call to Thanksgiving.
Okay. Bi-weekly memo.
Yeah, not too much.
First, do I have a Mary hit for you?
Huh? Where's my memo?
Here's.
Where's my memo? Thank you. Yeah, not much. reelection day and Home of the Brave, I had on my memo as well. Thank you to Lynn's team, and Home of the Brave went very well. Mary, thank you to you, SEC, and everybody for their efforts on that. The ADA Accessibility Self-Evaluation in the next few days, that should be going up on our website. There's going to be a copy available in the library and available in Town Hall. We asked the people review that. This is the draft self-study of our accessibility, and it outlines what we, where we have issues, where we might not have issues, where we're doing fine, where we need to fix. And we ask for public input. It'll be a 30-day public posting on the self-evaluation. So, again, we'll probably put a copy down at the clerk's office. The library will have one. We'll put one over at the senior center, and we'll be on the web with a feedback form. Noble Energy, oh, Mike was actually here a minute ago. Just an update on Noble Energy. Jean Bouban, Heather Blakely, and I met with Noble Energy representatives. They continue to seek approval for the light that had been approved and then was disapproved. They did traffic counts, and their traffic counts appear now to comply with what DOT is insisting they have to comply with. They have submitted those numbers to DOT, and now we're waiting to see if DOT agrees with that now. But that's where that is. Potom Project, Heather, Lauren, and I met with the team from the project owner for the Charlton Solar Project. I don't want to get too much in detail because there's some appeals that National Grid made on some conditions that Conservation put on regarding the cleanup of that area where the gate was over there. The cleanup pile, there's a portion of the pile that's on private property. There's a portion of the pile that's on our property, which is the easement, and all sorts of complicated things there. But we are working, the property owner is committed to the original agreement that was signed through this board on the road maintenance that says that they are responsible for cleaning the road in preparation for this. So, they are honoring that. They're happy to honor that. We had a meeting confirming that. The question of who's going to do that work, whether the National Grid's going to continue with its appeal of the NOI, or go for an NOI, whatever. But just an update that we are in touch. They are aware that it is their responsibility. So, in all of this, at some point, the portion of that pile that is on the town property will be cleaned, and that is one of the side benefits of the project. As much as the project has been a heavy lift, and we are hopeful for better service in that area, we also will get that area cleaned up. There's a lot of not-so-good stuff. Not dangerous, but just not things that we want left around in piles. So, that is the update on that.
Okay, great. All right, moving to action items. I'm going to start with some broad questions on A, B, C, and D. First, have these all gone through personnel?
Yes.
And did personnel recommend that we-
Yes. One correction on D. It says grade nine here. The original draft, the police chief gave to personnel said grade 10, but that was not his intention. His intention was for it to be a grade nine.
Okay.
So, just for the record, what we are approving, personnel approved a 10, but that was not the spirit of it. It was supposed to be a nine.
Okay.
But yes, all of these have gone through.
All right, so, we can take them, I mean, you know, the, I understand too, Robyn, that on some of the, for the non, for the non-police job, that there's some concern about evaluating the, basically our compensation plan as it presently stands and putting it through the board, because over, you know, I think we did five, or when Jeff was here was last, of course, and Jeff.
It was implemented in July of 20.
20, and a lot has changed in 2020.
It was done through COVID and implemented.
So, it, there probably does need some attention, which I think, but my inclination, unless the board feels differently, is I think that's kind of secondary to this conversation because we're operating under the present system. So, these, if the personnel board's fine with it, unless somebody has a strong feeling about one of them, has an issue, as we go through each of them, I see no reason to combing all those conversations, if that makes any sense.
I just am looking separately for approval to review this and potentially revise it.
Okay, that makes sense. So, all right, so, we're starting with action item A, consideration of possible action on the approval of grade change to six, and update the job description for the assistant town clerk. Any concerns from the board?
No.
Lynn, unless you want to talk on it, I think we're, no, okay. So, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the grade change to six, and update the job description for the assistant town clerk.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? I just have it. All right. Moving to consideration of possible action on the approval of grade change to 10, job title changed to public health director, and updated job description. Any concerns from the board? Linda, originally, unless you want to talk on it, I think we're, okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the grade change to 10, job title changed to public health director, and updated job description.
Second.
Great. All those in favor? Great. C, consideration of possible action on the approval of the grade change to seven, job title changed from public health inspector to public health, public health inspection agent, and updated job description. Any concerns from the board? Anything on this one, guys? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the grade change to seven, job title changed from public health inspector to public health inspection agent, and updated job description.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Have it. And consideration of possible action on the approval of the deputy police chief, position is grade nine. Any concerns from the board, other than the chief's huge error from nine to 10? Do we have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the deputy police chief position as grade nine.
Second.
Great. All those in favor? Great. Thanks, guys.
I just had a question.
Sure.
I'm behind it, but what, was one grade level even higher than what was requested?
The assistant clerk.
Okay.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Is it just a coincidence that it all came at once, or were you saying?
Coincid- well, I had put, I knew the deputy chief's position was coming up, so I had put out, because I was getting a personnel committee meeting together, I put out an email to everybody and said, if there are concerns, please do them now, instead of having this group have to meet, you know, trickle in, with the budget coming up.
Okay, so you did give an opportunity for all the departments to suggest job change?
Yes.
That, that was my question, and that it wasn't piecemeal.
But, but then, when I started to see these trickling in, and then Becky has come to me from the library about a potential concern she has, and because that job has changed, and so that's why my request to review this, take what HR Gov has done, I don't want to abandon everything there, but there are some, there are inconsistencies now. There are different responsibilities. When personnel scores these, they sort of score them in a vacuum as they come in and trickle in. So, they score it, but now that puts things at the same level as other things. It puts assistants in some departments higher than assistants in other departments, when the assistant level should be somewhat the same. The span for the police one puts the deputy police chief and lieutenant in the same grade. Now, they'll get paid different steps, but that's not the spirit of the grade system. That kind of, and it should be where it is. The chief is right, because that's what the deputy fire chief is. So, there might need to be another grade in between that nine and that 10, where those deputy chiefs sit. It's not about getting people more money. We would redo the step system so that it, people would laterally financially move. I'm not trying to raise salaries, but I'm trying to have the grades, which means more growth on the other end before they max out. So, that's where they benefit on the other end. There's more growth in that position. But it just, the grades matter to people because it's a reflection of the level of their work. It's not about the money necessarily.
Well, I inquired because I long thought that the assistant town clerk was too low back when this government, back when we contracted this out. And at the time, the clerk's office said, you know, we're fine, but they really graded it like she is an assistant to the town clerk, rather than an assistant town clerk that has all the duties and responsibilities of a town clerk.
Right.
So, I'm glad, in particular, to see that particular job grade change.
And the argument holds true now for the assistant conservation agent position, which is no longer clerk, and so that's-
Let's not start getting, let's stay on the topics at hand.
Right, but generally, that's, it's-
No, I get it, but let's, I don't want to start getting into ad hoc conversations about this. All right, so, moving on to action item E, consideration of possible action on reappointment of Diane Trapasso, a well-known troublemaker in the Affordable Housing Trust for a term to expire on December 19th, 2026.
And we like troublemakers.
I make, I make a motion to appoint her. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. All right. Consideration of possible action on accepting the donation from Robert Bednarcik, to the, I don't know, it's like, once I screw up, I'm never going to get it, to the Sturbridge Senior Center, and the amount of $4,000 to be used towards their new lunch program with great thanks. Do we have a motion?
So moved. I'm not saying that name.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
And a huge thing. That's a very generous, very generous. That's a local business. That is a local business, and we're very grateful.
Yeah, very nice.
I'm going to make a motion to accept with thanks the resignation from Cynthia Sawa-Forgit, Building Department Administrative Assistant, effective December 13th, 2024, again, with our thanks for her hard work.
Second.
All those in favor?
Is she moving to a new?
I don't know.
Old business. Mary Dowling.
Old business. Oh, I did have one question. So, what's going on with that proposed fence on Lake Road Gate? I'm sorry, gate, not fence.
So, there's a little bit of misinformation on the Facebook.
I don't know. I just had different people asking questions.
So, what happened is, we stayed in contact with the people from Lake Road, indicating that we don't support nor not support what they do. All we do is advise as to whether or not we can continue to provide the services of plowing and what, they cannot block off a road effectively from the public and us still provide services. They are not. They are installing a gate on one person's property. You can drive up to the gate from either direction and drive back out. What it stops is through traffic. They, as an association, have chosen to have a FOB system, and they have chosen to allow the people on Old Town Road to be able to buy FOB service. They're paying for the gate, the survey work, all that stuff. It's all a private matter, basically. The public, the only public role the town has is to ensure that whatever they do, number one, doesn't block public safety access. There will be FOBS for public safety, and we've sat with the police chief, the fire chief, DPW on this. And that is, that as long as people can drive up the road, they, they still get the right to have it plowed and have potholes built.
I guess my, one of the questions I have, though, is in terms of our public, like, if an ambulance has to get there?
Yep. They will have access to cut through. They don't have to go around. Yes.
But are they going to have a FOB?
Yes.
Okay, so-
Yes, that's all been-
I know, but hold on. So, that means every ambulance and every police officer is going to have a FOB? Or is there going to be one FOB that sits in public safety? I mean, how does that work?
Leave every vehicle. I don't know how they've got up with the police chiefs.
Well, because that kind of matters to me, especially for the residents on Old Town Way, for those who don't buy in to the FOB, let's say they can't afford it, or for whatever reason they don't, and they need the ambulance, and it's shorter for the ambulance to go through Lake Road than it is 148.
Yes, they will. Yes.
Right, but how many FOBS are going to be given to the town?
I could find out specifically, but-
That's going to kind of matter, if an ambulance is called, and the FOB's in the wrong ambulance.
In the past, like, the condos on Route 15, okay, there's a gate there.
Right.
Every emergency vehicle has their own FOB, because you never know-
Okay, thank you.
Which vehicle is going to-
That was my concern.
To respond.
I don't know, but I, and I assume the police cars will have the same, but the chiefs have both vetted that they, and confirmed that however, they've worked directly with the Lake Road residents, that this, when this gate was installed, that there's 100% same access for emergency vehicles and snowplows.
There used to be, they used to activate- There used to be, they used to activate based on the alarm in the, the siren in the vehicle.
And that may be what they finalized on, that if the alarm went off, it would automatically release the gate, but I can confirm specifically the details.
Yeah, because I just, I want to make sure, the way Mary Lou outlined it.
I'll get the details for you, but the, both chiefs were directly involved in this discussion, to ensure that no, an emergency vehicle does not go around.
Okay, okay.
It's not every officer and every firefighter would have it, it would just be the vehicle.
The vehicle.
The vehicle.
I think there's a code, yes, that's what I think, but I don't want to give you wrong information.
Okay, great. All right, Mary, any other old business, Mary? No? Okay. Chase, old business?
No old business.
Mary Lou, old business?
Do we have any update on Spectrum?
The contract?
Not since the last meeting, Al was supposed to reach out to me to get some legal questions answered, I have not heard from him yet, but I'll check back with him.
Okay.
Okay, I have no old business, new business, Mary Lou?
Yeah, today, I was fortunate to attend the meeting for the feasibility study on the regional dispatch, and it was attended by all the five towns that were there, their police chiefs, their fire chiefs, and it was, it was a good meeting, it was a good meeting, but like I said, it was just touching the surface, getting the needs and wants of each department.
So thank you, I appreciate Mary Lou going, I was, I was actually double booked this morning, and they didn't give me notice into this until Thursday, I think.
Yeah.
So Mary Lou was gracious enough to attend on our behalf, and so this is part of a preliminary feasibility study to determine where, if we were to do this, where the best location would be for the centralized dispatch, all of those things, this will be thoroughly vetted through every town involved, if it were to happen. The reason we do consider it, of course, is that we clearly need radio upgrades in this town to the tune of probably over $6 million, before we invest in any of that, if a regional dispatch makes more sense, and is equal in public safety or better, and cheaper, then obviously we need to consider that. So I will keep you in the loop, Mary Lou, if the board wants to have Mary Lou as my contact person on this for updates, or collectively, however you all want to do that, it's great to have somebody that can kind of back up and hit those, that has some knowledge, particularly direct knowledge of the service, so, thank you, Mary Lou.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thanks, Mary Lou. Anything else on new business?
No.
Chase, new business?
Thank you.
Mary? New business?
New business? So it's kind of a mix of old and new, I know that the letters went out for those service lines, ours was one of them, I think it's copper, but, which is good, but, so I did a little bit of Googling, and at least one community, I don't know how many of those 1,200 people, maybe there's only going to be 100 with lead, I mean, they just don't know what they are, so they do an inspection, and we'll have to wait and see, but I know there's at least one town, Concord, that is helping those that do have a lead, they're doing it internally, they're calling it a lead, service line lead replacement program, and they're doing it for less in-house, and they're giving the opportunity, just something to think about, for the residents to pay it off on a payment plan on their water and sewer tax, similar to what we did with getting town services, and I don't know how many people it impacted, but I looked and I thought, something to think about, depending upon how many people, how many residences are impacted.
We'll keep an eye, as they start coming in, who's clicking the box there as positive.
Because I guess it can be several thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's not inexpensive.
But it looks like Concord, if you, if you look, their replacement program, doing it in-house, is going to cost the residents $1,500, and it's an incentive not to have, obviously, lead as your service line, so.
Absolutely, we'll follow that, sure.
So I'd be curious, how many, how many...
Let's see how many we have come back.
Yeah.
And also to the public, somebody messaged me today that they got a letter, even though they're not on town water, I'm trying to find out why, it may have been inadvertent, they do have a water line that runs by them, so it might have just been a mistake that somebody thought they were on town water, but I will also confirm why that happened, I, that just, I think it was just a glitch, but I'd rather more people get it that don't need it than, or the other way.
I agree. Anything else, Mary?
Nope, that's it.
All right, and I have no new business correspondence? Didn't see any.
You got anything?
I don't think so. No, I don't think so. Oh, okay. Okay, so no correspondence. Approval of minutes from the October 21, 2024 meeting, is any edits?
Last, these pages aren't numbered. Let's just look at the number of the pages. Under where it talks, where Barbara was talking, towards the end of there, the second paragraph to the end, this weather is spelled wrong.
Which page, which...
So under C, consideration of possible action of the proposed fiscal updates, what paragraph is it, Mary?
Okay, towards the end.
Where, there's a weather that's spelled wrong.
Then here, we were, and flexibility as to weather.
In the capital, that seems correct, I don't know. Where is it, Mary Lou?
Okay, if you go to the page where at the very bottom, it says the motion to adopt the proposal of fiscal policy.
Yep.
Go up two paragraphs.
Perfect.
I'm going to stop.
There it is.
There it is.
Oh, that's good.
Yep, we got it.
Excellent. Okay, any other edits?
No edits, but I'm going to go back to old business and say, so just reading the minutes from October, are we still working on getting other towns that have a similar cash, cash reserve to us?
Yeah.
Anything else on the minutes? Do we have a motion to approve as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 21, 2024 as amended.
All second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Everybody have a happy day.